All right, y'all ready?
Let's get it on.
You like Holland?
Are you ready?
Okay. I like Holland, yeah.
All right. One minute or you're ready? Okay. Uh, we're gonna call the meeting to order, our August 2nd, uh, meeting. If, uh, does the Chair have a, uh, motion to suspend the rules?
No.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. We're kinda having technical difficulty, but we're working to fix that, uh, shortly. Um, is there, uh, any discussion?
I have a comment. Just one comment. I don't know that any of these are emergencies, so I'm not gonna vote in favor of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Those opposed? Case 61. Uh, if the clerk would read the additions.
To the consent agenda by adding item 5, new resolution, moving the budget for the American Rescue Plan Act funds into the budget for Schwaners Boulevard water sewer extension, adding 5 new resolution, encouraging professional service agreement with Stover Developments LLC.
Thank you to Chair and Attorney General. As amended, uh, Mr. Lawrence made the motion and was seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Gines?
None.
Anyone else? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion case 61. That leads us to our mayor's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm gonna ask. I'll pay the person.
Hello. All right, thank y'all. My favorite couple in Biloxi, they've been here for a long time and we just connect so well. It's amazing how she knows how I think and it does too. But this certificate of recognition by the authority vested in me by the people of the city of Biloxi, Jane Shambra, is hereby awarded this certificate of recognition on the occasion of your retirement for 20 years of service with Harrison County Library System. As Biloxi's local history and genealogy librarian. Jane, thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll give you the mic.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, um, your appreciation. It's been, it's been a pleasure, um, to work and a privilege as well to work with the city and all the projects. And every day was a new adventure. Mayor Fofo would come up with a new person that came to Biloxi or a new topic and we'd have all kinds of fun looking for it. But keep in mind, you know, all the work that I did on the Biloxi BUs, all of that is still available on the amazing website that's online. All you have to do is to click away, right? And this goes back to, uh, 2018. You can see all that. Plus, there's all kinds of other things on that website, including cemetery information, maps, um, when is the meeting, what is the city council agenda? It just goes on and on. And honestly, I think that the website that the city has is certainly noteworthy and actually they should have some kind of award for all that you've done with that.
We're looking for volunteers, too.
And I will find them, too. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Biloxi. I think we're looking for, uh, Alma Thomas, right, Jane? With this, yeah, I think she's in town at Glanzoa.
Alma Thomas. Yes, indeed.
Yeah.
Uh, after two days, he's not, he's still with us, right? And I would like to introduce our new Director of Engineering, Stan Rose. And you're still with us, and I think, you know, you're...
Looking forward to working with her.
Well, good deal. We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, and the last thing I'd like to ask you, spread the expenses, Biloxi travel card, uh, expense card to the, uh, to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna apologize to everyone in my haste. I skipped over, uh, the invocation and the Pledge Allegiance. So under the council report, if I'd asked everybody to stand, uh, Mr. Gines, would you do us the Pledge of the invocation? And Mr. Lawrence, if you could do this in the pledge afterwards?
As bow heads, grace of Father, give her all good graces. She come in your Lord for women and blessings. We already thank you for our great city of Biloxi. We thank you for all of our leaders. We thank you for each and every person in this council. God bless America. God bless our state of Mississippi. God bless Biloxi. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it is founded, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was the council reports. Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
Hey, a couple things. We brought these up last week. Man, sinking white poles, do we have anybody looking into those at the ball fields? Like, what we can do to stop it from sinking? Okay. But I mean, it's gotta be hard to get that fixed, you know? And I feel like they're going to pick a ball and I hope that we get it all together, get the coast built. I just think it's a hot thing in the United States and when you take advantage of that right now, the people coming to town to play is a good thing for the city of Biloxi. And then, uh, I told you a really big lot about Drew Brees taking over the mail drop, something, and pickleball league, and it's a major, major league, right? Did you like that? I got it from you.
You have, you have me confused with somebody else.
Well, come on, your name. I didn't know who said it. It was all about Drew Brees getting to the pickleball. It's a major league they call it.
Kenny.
Who was that?
It was, well, I think it was Kenny. We're often confused, George.
Well, come down here, well, come on, your name. Did you, uh, did you talk to Drew Brees? Drew Brees?
I do.
I'm not, I'm kidding.
Kenny. You was just handed a note from Drew Brees.
Okay, I know. What did, what did, yeah? He says he's considering coming out of retirement after looking at the science of practices. But anyway, go ahead. Continue, Mr. Lawrence. Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's a good thing. It's just a hot thing throughout the United States. They've gotta be taking advantage of him now. And on our balance sheet number, did we get those numbers straight? I must be a few weeks you were looking at that? Get me a true number?
Yeah, this is the construction and improvement, uh, balance sheet item. I think ABL should be, uh, having that shortly.
Okay, it's a 2020, so I mean, better than you, I was looking at, so we just don't know. Somebody gotta come to an afterwards, that very quick. Let's see, I don't know what I'm afraid to do. Uh, that's pretty much, I'm glad this guy here to fix the machine. So all the people listening, as they're talking and paying attention on TV, we get that fixed, it'll be a good thing. You know, going up, it'd be awesome. And I want to ask you, I call the negative adjustments on the planning commission. I made some suggestions, you know, that need to replace certain people, so I mean, it's just time for them to look at that.
Vacancies, I feel, I have not done it, I've been in the middle of the budget the last, uh, few days. We'll take a look at it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gines.
Yeah, just wanna mention a quick report about the downtown Main Street group, um, the Mississippi State rep is in town, um, doing a new assessment. And they retired with the Kellogg's Foundation, uh, to do an assessment of the downtown area, uh, the ways and, the ways, uh, we can develop it, also make it a whole lot better. And I just wanna invite anyone who wanna come out tomorrow, 5 o'clock, they're gonna do an assessment and give us some ideas of improving the downtown and improving Biloxi area. Thank you. And this one? Yes, this one? Yes.
Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Gines?
I don't have any report other than I'm glad to see you on board and I'm sure we'll get to know each other really well.
Be driving around with it before too much longer.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just a quick question, Peter. This is, uh, deals with 5A under the consent agenda. That's a budget amendment. I think it's to, uh, for code violations, to clean up property and all that thing. I don't think it's, I don't think you can use any of those funds for stump removals or grinding, can you? We can talk more about it when we get to that. Moving on to my, uh, next comment. I know, uh, Mr. Cool, a couple of things. Couple of properties that really need to be, uh, where it's the grass more than anything, on the corner of Rich and Carter and on the corner of McCarthy and Pass Road. And Mayor, on the West Biloxi Library, are they done replacing or repairing that air conditioning unit out there, if you heard?
You know, I, I need to ask Keith Stewart about, I know the PO was issued, I think.
You could ask Mr. Rose. Yeah, I don't think you'll get an answer, but you can ask him. Okay. The, uh, next, next item, 'cause I drive this street rurally, but it's, it looks like the surface of the moon. It's Crusoe Street right there, where you turn off Highway 90 and it curves up and north to Jackson. Could we get that resurfaced?
Yeah, that's been one of the avenues, you know, we look at some adjustments to, for asphalt and so forth.
See, even if it turns out just to be temporary, I don't know what, you know, uh, infrastructure work may be done there in the future. It's just, it's, it's kind of a gateway to the city, particularly if you're walking. Um, congratulations to Miss Shamba on her retirement. Now, there's somebody at home to supervise it. Yeah, I appreciate that. And we'd like to welcome Mr. Rose as the City Engineer. Welcome to Biloxi, sir. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Barrett.
I have no report today.
Okay. Got a few things. Uh, Mr. Rose, welcome. Uh, I got some projects, so, uh, we usually ride around with the mayor, but I'd, I'd love to take you, uh, ride around my ward, uh, show you a few things and, uh, so you get on the radar. And, uh, your expertise, we've been waiting for, uh, someone like you, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad we're able to attract you to the city of Biloxi and here. Another thing I wanna mention, and, uh, we had some good budget talks at our special meeting today, and, uh, I appreciate all my colleagues in the council for, uh, attending that meeting and, uh, going over the, uh, budget with the mayor, trying to get this thing right. Looks like we're trying to focus on compensating our employees fully, uh, as we possibly can. And, uh, certainly found the budget, so we have the best fire and police departments anywhere, uh, here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And I agree with the comment Mr. Gines made during those meetings, you know, y'all should be at the top. Not near the top. Y'all should be at the top here on the coastal cities, uh, for sure. Um, and then, uh, over in Parks and Rock, and I know we'll get to public works and, uh, and all that kinda stuff, too, the other departments, engineering, um, you know, y'all doing a central job for us. We worked so hard this past year, but being short, uh, it's not just the city of Biloxi and your departments, as you, you probably know, but I just wanna state this, that it's something all businesses are experiencing, all cities, municipalities, counties are experiencing this shortage of help and, and, uh, appropriately, and they'll continue to work hard to do that. Uh, 'cause we got a lot, a lot of work to be done. Bifurcation is, uh, key. We spent a lot of time last year talking about that, and we actually carved out some contracted services to take the burden off some of those other departments. I'm not sure it worked effectively. There may be a, a higher amount, and we need to look at that as we work through these budgets, Mr. Mayor. Um, because it is key, then our tourists and our, our residents drive and walk around the city to see their tax dollars at work, and, as you say, a beautiful, safe, uh, you know, Biloxi, family of Biloxi. All right. Um, I wanna conclude with, uh, a tournament that's being, uh, organized. Uh, we do have a tournament director who's trying to, uh, organize two tournaments, two pretty big tournaments, maybe as many as 44 teams, uh, at AJ Holiday Sportsplex. And this is, uh, he wants to bring the old time flair back. George, if you remember, they used to have an announcer at games and they used to, uh, talk about the, uh, hits and who's coming up at bat. You don't hear or see that much anymore. So this tournament director is trying to do that. He is a major sponsor, local, uh, Alan Beveridge is distributing, uh, if we sell Pepsi products, and I think that's been worked out. Peter, I appreciate your help, uh, with that, but I think that's worked out with our, um, concession person. Uh, but to have a tournament in September and October, uh, just is a tip of the iceberg, but we can see, uh, whether it's AJ Holiday Sportsplex or pickleball tournaments or other, uh, little, uh, little league team, uh, little league, uh, fields, uh, anywhere on the city. And we need to find a way to get those fields up to snub. All it takes is money. That's all it takes. I heard that today. What does it, uh, take to take care of the employees? All it takes is money. It's the same thing with, uh, enhancing, whether it's grass cutting or enhancing the field experience or whatever. All it takes is money. Um, we get, we know how much we got, let's see if we can spend it honestly. And that concludes my report. Uh, we'll move on, uh, to the public agenda. Wait, 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 wait. Sorry. What, citizens' comments? Uh, we have a total of 45 minutes allotted. You will have three minutes. When the clerk rings the bell, that's it. Uh, and so when you're called upon, if you would come up to the front, take your seat at the front, uh, sign in, legibly, your name and your address. Write your name and your address for the record so the clerk can record your comments. So we'll start on my left, your right. Just raise your hand, be recognized. Come on up to the front.
Ma'am, before you start that clock, everybody, please put your phones down and pay attention. Thank you.
I would like to address the things that were addressed in the budgetary hearing last week. Obviously, y'all did not hear, uh, two weeks ago. Um, Mr. Barrett. Indoctrination is what religions do, not gay people. Gay people are not made by books. Gay people are made by you. I make the assumption that all of you are heterosexual. Heterosexuals make babies. On the rare occasion, gay people do too, but mostly heterosexual. Books do not make gay people or trans people. Heterosexual people do. And also, the people that use the library, especially the library Ward 3, that is home to two grandfathered-in trailer parks and numerous low-income apartment complexes, need that library. That's why Amazon is not an option. So the terrorists throwing out that Amazon is an option to anything is abhorrent, because it makes you not look disingenuous to your constituents. And for another thing, if you are a religious person, that's great. We have freedom of religion in America. But that's as long as your religion doesn't step on my rights to live. Period. End of story. I'm fine with it. But do not legislate for your tastes. You have to think about everybody that lives in this city, not just you. And from how they talked about the budget, I would also consider auditing how many city vehicles leave the county on a daily basis that get driven, driven to people's private homes and paid for by the city, including our gas. Thank you.
State your name. I guess for the record.
E.W. Suarez. Ward 3.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Your right? This side of the room? Anyone on my right? Your left? Come on up?
My name is C.J. Michael Templin, and I am Biloxi Ward 7 resident with my husband of six years, Dustin Michael Templin. And for two years in a row, I have submitted a proclamation for June, which is Pride Month, and both years, the city has refused to acknowledge my request. So I would like to read it now. Whereas the city of Biloxi cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance and equality and freedom. Whereas all are welcome in the city of Biloxi to live, work, play, and ever family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the city denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas the city appreciates cultural, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, asexual, and intersex plus community members, which strengthen our social welfare, welfare. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQIA+ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, we, the LGBTQIA+ citizens of Biloxi, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Despite the city refusing to acknowledge the existence of its queer, genderqueer citizens and council members further comparing us to sex toys and pornography, 3.5% of the population of Mississippi identifies as queer. And a percentage of same-sex couples raising kids in Mississippi is 25.7%, the highest of all states in the nation. They claim they wanna protect kids, but in 2022, 54% of transgender and non-binary young people considered suicide, and 29% made an attempt. Research indicates that gender-affirming care greatly improves the mental health and overall well-being for gender diverse, transgender, and non-binary children and adolescents. It's also important to note that a person doesn't need to transition at all or even feel body dysphoria to identify as trans. And finally, I'd like to leave you with a list of gender-affirming care that heterosexual people receive all the time. HRT for older people, balding treatments, AD treatments, breast implants, and circumcisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Your left? Anyone in the back of the room? All right. Citizens' comments is now closed. Move on to the policy agenda. I don't know.
Orders to amend the land development orders to modify solar energy equipment and plan development.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I have no problem with this. Actually, it's, I guess, making solar power more accessible, um, in appearance and location, I guess, on the, on the roof than what was, it's less restricted than it currently, uh, in current ordinance, is this accurate, Jay?
Yes, sir. What we're doing here is making sure that the, uh, we're all familiar with the old-fashioned solar panels, you know, that are very large and bulky, but they're also very reflective. We're making sure that at intersections, that that reflection doesn't become a, a traffic issue there. Also, um, there are the new type of solar panels that have come out now that look exactly like shingles on the roof, where you, you pass by and you don't even notice. So we're, we're opening the door for those to be accessible, and they were correcting a scrims there, and there were, there was a typo with the wrong, uh, code number on it.
I would hope the board continued to push in, in the area of solar energy, renewable energy.
I would expect that this ordinance will be coming back with a number of, uh, updates as technology improves.
As, yeah, prices come down. That's terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Anyone else?
Uh, Jerry, where is the, the error? It's a scrims error, that's because it's on the table. So what, what was the error? Where is the problem?
Oh, that was just, that was just part of what it was, is, uh, one of the code sections that is used as a reference on here had a five in the, in the number, and it should've been a three. So we're making that correction.
All right. That was, that was one of the things, but also, again, opening the door for this new type of solar panel, uh, that has come out, so. So where is the five? You corrected two of three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Call for a question, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion case unanimous? Resolution B?
Resolution granted, matter settled, and final proposal for unaggressive personal demand and payment of a reward.
You have a motion? Mr. Barrett, you have a motion?
Yes.
All right. I second that. Moved by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Tisdale.
This is just splitting a, a piece up, yeah.
That's probably the questions.
Mr. Tisdale? Nothing to add? Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion case? Chair and Attorney General motion on the consent. Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor.
Uh, let's go to, look at 5A. This is a budget amendment, and I think it's just, uh, dealing with the code enforcement violations, where you've got overgrown property and everything, or just moving money into that, uh, that account. Is that correct, Jay?
Yes, sir. We've got, uh, we've got 12 properties right now that the council has approved for us to go clean up, and, uh, they total almost 42,000 owners. And I'm asking for 50, because we've got some on the agenda today and some others that'll be coming in the next couple of months.
Right, I know we've been busy with this year along those lines. Can, can any of these monies can be used to grind stumps, say, at, uh, Benzall Park?
Get you some hard cotton stuff.
All right. I didn't think so. Just put some of those, whatever. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gines, you have the floor? All right. Mr. Barrett, you got the floor?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I have some more.
Mr. Gines? Mr. Gines? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, one quick, uh, question, Jerry. I know we're 50,000, dude. Have we collected much money off the taxes that Biloxi people have, you know, take the property, clean, picked it up? Have we actually collected much of the taxes? Has there been any more?
Well, what's, how are we charging the taxes? Yes, we do something like that. We charge them taxes. And the city council passes a resolution, and we hire a contractor to go out and clean that property up, whatever the costs are, are added back to the taxes on the property. And when that owner or tax purchaser or whoever goes to pay the taxes on that property the next year, they have to pay the taxes and a special assessment at the same time. So, um, and we are, we are collecting this money back. Donna, Donna mentioned that at the revenue meeting that we had the other day about how successful we've been at recouping this money.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we're all collecting money.
Yes, sir. It is coming back.
I understand, pass the way we could do that, to put on my taxes.
That's correct.
That was a good thing for us, you know? Yeah. Okay, and how we finished, uh, the Back Bay Boulevard and had money left there in the hallway.
Rachel, just moving the remainder.
Be requesting that the DMR allow us to move 166,000 remaining in the grant to the new Boardwalk project in East Biloxi that goes between the Small Craft Harbor and Oak Street.
So you're going to run from that to that?
Yes.
And what I'll do, they're just, uh, on R, we, uh, the budget was $15 for the last year, but you're holding up 20. I know this year we moved it to 20, but last year, last year's budget was budgeted at 15,000. That's R. So how you get to 20? So I'll have to get to twenty. We had a budget of twenty last year. This year we moved it to twenty, all the, this year after the current budget. So, uh, just at a fif- twenty thousand, I was only fifteen budgeted last year.
I might be able to answer that, Mr. Erbahn. Budgeted, budgeted for the, uh, Women's Center for Nonviolence, we've budgeted in this current fiscal year fifteen thousand dollars, and we also budgeted in this current year an additional five thousand dollars for the Family Justice Center. So this resolution covers both of those expenditures that are budgeted under this year's current non, uh, non-deportmentals, so.
But pardon? That, I don't know about that. This would be budgeted for next year, but you can't pay for this year's budget. We're all budgeted fifteen thousand.
I'm, I'm happy to explain it again. In this current budget that we approved last year, there were two line items for the women's shelter. One was fifteen thousand for the, for the center. The other five thousand dollars was a new request that was to be used for seed running for the Family Justice Center that they're cranking up to serve all of Harrison Counties, and other cities are contributing that as well. So that's all we're doing. They had not requested these two payments from the city until now.
So the five thousand also goes to the women.
For the Family Justice Center. And we, we did talk about, uh, the appropriations for next year. That's a, those are slightly different figures, but what, all we're doing is approving now what we budgeted for earlier in the year. They just never asked for that until now.
Okay. Have one other question.
We said, hey, the five billion, we just want to make sure we got it right, that's all. And how much does a sanger cost? I know, up to fourteen million for the sanger? What is it now?
Not fourteen million.
I'm just kidding you. They're excited out there. But, but relax a little bit over there. Just, we get all done and shake. So we look at the days, are we getting anywhere close to finishing up that project? I know they're working, babe.
Let, let me give an update. I think I might have covered it at one point in time, but, um, we're waiting on approval of the replacement of the brick right there about eight feet off the four, uh, off the, uh, in the front. And that held up about a year worth of, uh, you know, approval from MDAH, from Mississippi Department of Health and Public Health. But, uh, we'll finish, we'll finish everything over here, replace the, the, uh, I guess, the, the door and, and windows in the front, as well as the awning replacement, I think by September, but is what we're looking at, end of September, like that, was targeted. But it may be because of the type of brick that MDAH requires to replace that stucco, the glass stucco that was there, uh, it may be into the new work, uh, or so, before they get the brick, so they can replace it as MDAH wants. But, you know, we, we feel like that, uh, everything except that, those sections of brick that are right off the, uh, you know, uh, in the front will be, uh, will hold us up on how we will be, uh, looking for proposals to operate the whole, uh, uh, sanger operation as far as, you know, I think what MDA, MDAH is asking us to do. So we'll move forward with that soon as the awning and soon as the, uh, storefront is fixed, and we'll, uh, uh, be, you know, probably asking for proposals on how we move forward. And then the interior will be based, because if somebody comes with, uh, uh, some proposals that they would put a number of, you know, millions of dollars in, in it in order to operate it for a period of time, that will be the, you know, real kickoff.
Has, uh, any work been done inside the place, or you have to wait?
No, it's been a significant amount of, of, of just, uh, bringing it down to the structure, and it really looks, uh, well, we've got two to three aisles, uh, of seats removed and stored, I think on, uh, in our building and on, uh, or the building we rented on, on Crawford Street. Uh, but it does, it is pretty impressive. We met with, uh, um, some of the legislators, Scott Delano, Kevin, and, uh, also, uh, Richard, Bennett, uh, in, in looking at, uh, I think they were very satisfied with where we were. And, and it's not, I, I'm thinking, uh, you know, it, it's not a lot of money to move forward on the inside to make it productive, but we want to get opinions from these folks who actually do this commercially in different places to see what needs, what they would be willing to do to, you know, uh, do certain productions and make it more functional.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, that's something that we can take care of. We're growing a lot. I figure we're going to put like a quarter of the hundred, have to, have a lot to do with that. She's supportive a lot, yeah. That's another good thing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Mr. Gines?
None.
Mr. Dunne?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Just have one, one question on item N, uh, item N, Mr. Erbahn. Um, and that deals with, uh, a public defender where I guess we're oppinating the seller, which is fine as far as I know, she does a good job, but that triggered another thought with, uh, community court. My understanding is that the prosecutor for that court basically works one day a month, so that's twelve days a year. And he's, uh, to my knowledge, he's not being compensated for those additional days. Could we just make a budget note for that is all? I have no exceptions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Barrett?
None.
I have none. All in favor of the consent agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll go ahead and open the code enforcement hearings.
Item A on the agenda, Margaret L. Benedict, non-urban, Bluff Ridge. This property is still in violation.
Our IT man left. You're up.
Item A. That's all right. You're worth waiting for.
Well, let me tell you a little bit about this property. Um, I had my guys go out and check it today. They said the grass was being cut, but there's a swimming pool in the backyard that's stagnant and has water in it, which, uh, we're, we're trying to get resolved.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Margaret L. Benedict? You'd come up to the front, state your name.
Toby Terrio. I'm her grandson. I, uh, I actually work out of town. I just came back in this past Friday. I, uh, I already hired a contractor, which is, you're with me. He's going to come out Saturday and fill the pool in. I'm going to come out, lay sod on top of it, and get it all taken care of.
How many days do you need to extend it? Will it extend days? How many, thirty days, sixty days?
Nah, I just need to extend it till Saturday. I'm going to do it Saturday. This coming Saturday.
Well, I moved to give him a thirty-day extension.
I'll second.
All right. There was a motion, uh, by Mr. Dunne to give you thirty days. Seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? You have thirty days, sir.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Move on to the next case.
Item B, Bales Taxile Properties, 408 Howard Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Bales, uh, Taxile Properties? Their being, this is closed.
Item C, John and Edith Garcia, 402 Christ Street. This property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of John and Ruth Garcia? They're being in the room. This case is closed.
Item B, Son and Don Wayne, 7129 East Rocky Place. I would ask for thirty days. They are here at the beginning of the meeting. They are working on the property. We verified that today.
Chair, entertain a motion?
Three days.
I'll second.
All right. And that motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Item E, Tony J. Scarametta Estate, 328 St. Mary Boulevard. I would also ask for thirty days. They are working on the property.
Moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Code enforcement hearings are now closed. Is a motion on the routine agenda?
The move.
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, settled by Mr. Gines, Mr. Lawrence.
Wow. The front row seat this time, it's pretty good.
Good evening, council.
So we do have the two point one five million I mentioned in our last council meeting is in, that's step four or five. Um, it's been there a couple of days. We should have it into our city accounts in the next ten to twelve business days.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Mr. Gines?
None.
Anyone else? All in favor of the routine agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to recess?
The move. I'll second.
All right. Lawrence, Mr. Gines, any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? We've now steered for joint recessed.
Ho, ho.